Favor? Opposed? I got you.
I'll say, I'll say, I'll be verbal, I'll say yes.
Uh, next is, um, correspondence from the police call October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Questions? Or is this considering we have none discussion items first is historical society building options? Is he right here for that or?
The infrastructure committee at the last infrastructure committee meeting, um, heard a presentation by the historical society of auctions for, ways to, save the building that is currently houses the historical site, society artifacts. Because there's no, there's no basement under it and so the, the moisture problem is damaging the things that are there. And they had done a lot of work, they proposed, um, a couple of options, one would be relocating the building, which is virtually impossible, but the one that they're, they're proposing is to do something like was proposed a few years ago, which is to raise the building, move it up further, closer to Main Street and put a foundation under it with a daylight basement in the back that could be used by the town if it wanted to develop public bathrooms or an information center or do those kind of things, so. Estimated cost of, uh, just lifting the building, um, and putting it in foundation and doing that work, I believe it was a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and sixty of them, yeah, ish.
Yeah, hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that was, um, and so the committee said that that, that the council as a whole should talk about whether or not, um, that is something that they would look at supporting or working towards because the the, uh, not addressing that, that issue is damaging the artifacts that are, the historical site, society and, um, that, that was the most cost effective way that they had determined in order to keep it at that location on Main Street, which was cited as important to them and, um.
Were they looking for the town to put the whole bill? Is that how it killed off?
Yeah, and there was discussions about, you know, they're only open a hundred hours a year. You know, and there is no intent to do any more than that. So I just wasn't reservation, you know, that's a big part of Main Street and I think the thing we didn't talk about is the town owns a lot. You know, there's probably a quarter million dollar lot, so it's not just a hundred and sixty thousand, it's more than we usually want them to talk about.
Any other questions or comments? It sounded very close to the decision or, or?
Uh, we certainly weren't, I'm looking at my notes from last time too to make sure I didn't give anything because I know I had to speak to it and that it seemed to be, the committee, it, it didn't, we didn't want to keep it with the committee, um, for a number of reasons, but I think council reason, but that's why it's here with the council, is that, and that is it. That's prime real estate, there's no other, no other way to say that, and so if we're committing to that, that usage, then we're committing to that usage, but there's, there's good and bad with that, um, but I, I, the bottom line here is that one way or another, there are a lot of artifacts in the historical society right now. And they've already lost some of them, and, and with the, the moisture problem that they have, the things that they have are continues. They're endangered, for lack of a better word, so, um.
Did they talk about any grant opportunities or anything or? Uh, there has to be something.
Well, they asked you, would the intent be to hire a director or exchange your hours and that wasn't something that they were looking towards at all, no?
It must, it's historic, it's not a historic building, it doesn't qualify for historic preservation funding because it has been relocated from earlier. Which makes it a more difficult grant.
Sure. Right, and part of the conversation is if we're going to commit to that, there are other uses that can be done with that, especially within the, with the basement, you could make that public restrooms, et cetera, but then you're talking on the evening. They also would put together some drawings around building a deck on the front of it, again, this point, that would get even more use out of the last four, but I don't know if anybody built the decks for free, so, but, again, that was why the committee felt this was, all of those things should be some.
Can you tell me, can you refresh that, like, do we own that building?
Yeah.
We do not, we're somewhere, who owns the building?
The historical society.
The historical society, five O N C or a nonprofit?
We talked about the idea that if this were going, if the town was going to invest in this building, that there would need to be an ownership interest in it.
I guess that's what I was wondering is, is the, is the ownership piece liable?
It, well, it'd have to be part of the conversation, I think, just as one person, because for example, they even stated that they don't need heat in that building, uh, none of the things they have there are endangered by the building getting cold, it's moisture. So if, if we were to take this project further than what they're proposing, just to eliminate the moisture and plummet and heat it and do all of those things, I, I think it becomes, obviously that becomes our responsibility and so forth and so. And so that it, I think, who's going to put that money into it and have some sort of.
I think the other part that the building is not installed. So would that something else that would have to be?
But they have their intent to do it.
Yeah. But again, looking at, if the historical society has been intent on doing that, but, you know, again, if the ownership switches in that, I, I think we need to do something about the historical society, I do, I feel like it's just sitting there and year to year, they come here and they ask for help for, you know, and then you, we talk about it, we get it, we, we kind of agree on most of it, for the most part, that something needs to be done and then it moves on to the next year, and then they come back with another, that's, you know, previous proposal or do one with even more effort, you know, put forth for it. I think that stuff's important, you know, so I think that we really need to do something about it and, or say, we're not going to do anything about it and.
Well, there are other options too, David, I mean, you've got American Asian Hall, the numbers would win and that's gonna, you know, what's gonna pick that up.
Yep.
Um, a lot of historical societies are in homes, you know, that's typically what they're in, which would solve the problem. But we'd also have to have a discussion about what does it bring to Main Street, you know, if it's only going to be open, yeah, a hundred hours a year.
How extensive was the number of visitors?
I don't think we've got a number, there, I mean, they do get visitors, no question, yeah.
They do, they cited that they had visitors from twenty-six states, was it, and I don't remember how many foreign countries. But, but they, they had people, um, people doing the hiso- historical thing. They did and they, they started with the Buck Cemetery and they came to the historical society and I'm pretty sure it was twenty-six states and it, it was three or four countries, other countries.
Do they, is it mainly talk of partnering with the folks in the group of, you know, peace down to the?
I think so, one, okay.
There is some set of the.
But they have that, but it's part of the historical society.
It is.
But it also, I believe so.
Uh, well, I think that they're the fiscal sponsor maybe because they're the five O N C three, but the, the group doing the John Paul, is John Paul here? What do you know about the, only because he's.
Oh, yeah.
The, um, the paper making museum, Pat Renzoni and some others have been. But I know that the historical society has also been involved in that process. I believe, I didn't know John Paul had been doing.
Uh, everyone's been involved in it, but you probably always want to say.
Yeah, I think they're connected.
I, I mean, you know, in reality, there's a, there's a possibility there of, of, there's a building that, that again, needs work. But they've got a, a movement in foot, it looks like, to, to get some work done down there. And it's kind of, it doesn't need a, you know, like a moisture issue, it's not there, like. Um, and I, I, I agree with Danny, I think there's something, I think we, we need to maybe broaden our horizons of what we're looking at and have these groups come in and and, uh, have them look at some other options still, I realize that it's been worth expanding that, that is a cool building, but cool buildings as folks around town know, cost a lot of money to maintain and again, bank, they bought for a hundred bucks, yes. The, the, the full-time bathroom, but we just have the same little bathroom for a heck of a lot less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So. Maybe, may, my suggestion would be maybe get some of these groups in there when the committee meetings, if we find supporters, representing paper folks and some of the people, stroke aside, and play them together and see if there is any chance of working together on something like that, so. Yep. That sounds like I'm hearing they have them, because they have done everything we've asked, but have them drive that process.
I think so, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, they, they provided all the information that was requested.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just, I, I, I don't know if, if the policy is there right now for, if they spend on that building for what, what they can get out of it, because there's other, if there's other movements or work that they, they work on that too, so.
If you remember, we had an evaluation of that building to move it up, put things underground, have a big balcony, interviewing thing and access down to the water.
There's lots of zeros in that, there was the.
Three plus minus zeros, yes, it's like a three million dollar total project and and this is, but that included insulating the building and new windows and a downstairs that was functional for a whole lot of other things that. The, one of their proposals included, which is in addition, is this, this deck provided, um, cover over an outdoor space where meetings could be, or those kind of things, so, but again, that's in addition to a hundred and the cost to move it up and put a foundation under it, so they, they put a lot of thought into it and they put a lot of, but they're, they're very committed to remaining on Main Street, I think that, that's a fair statement, they're in, they're very committed to remaining on Main Street and believe that that's necessary for them to get the kind of exposure that they, that, I'm repeating what they.
Yeah, well, I, I, I get that, I, 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 I just think it may be an opportunity to combine a couple things that we're looking at here, so.
But, but is it, is it a thought that these improvements would have been more interesting to the historical society or?
I, I would think so, I mean, I, you know, again, but it has to be open more than a hundred hours out of the year, I tend to, and I don't know if there's the capacity for folks to to want to do that.
Well, and I did, I believe I did ask that question, they said no, it wasn't the capacity, to me, the organization needs to build the capacity in order to make that move, you know, to consider that move to something more substantial.
And, and that's why I'd be interested in what the paper makers, the folks are looking at, what their, what their plans are on open hours or, or access or what they're looking at and.
What, what's the number of people that are in the historical society?
Members?
Yes.
I don't know. But that's, that's a question, no?
But they said they had four new members, or something.
I did, I did think they said, uh, they would look at being open more hours, but it would depend on volunteers, they would need more volunteers.
Did, did they mention whether or not they're keeping their volunteers or are people volunteering in the last week and?
He, I don't recall them mentioning any of, any of that.
It's, um, people are aging out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Got the T-shirt, I mean, it's, uh, that's the sort of what's happening to some of their volunteers, is they're getting older and they're not getting a lot of younger members, you know, to, they have four new members and that, and that's really good because, you know, they usually have a really hard time getting people to be there, this is.
And I, I don't think that's unique to just Bucksport, I think any historical society runs that way. So, but, but I, but I also think we have an opportunity with, with the other group setting something up that they may be able to work together, so. I, I think if we can get those groups in the room together and maybe at least talk about what things look like and, and, I know where the paper making museum is at, you know, and I don't know where they are in their process either, so.
It could put that as an agenda item, I, my only concern in doing the committee is that the whole council's going to have to.
Sure, so put this as an agenda item, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, and, and I think that's probably easier, most councils here anyway, but.
Any other thoughts on that? Everybody okay with that idea? Um, next is map two lot sixty-five adjacent to the Miles Lane Trails for sale?
There's a twenty-two acre parcel of land, um, adjacent to the Miles Lane Trails, um, that connects through Bayview and Race Course, I think is the location, is that right, Rich?
Yes.
Yes, I thought so. And the current owner has it for sale and approached me some time ago about whether the town would be interested in it, I contacted Jim Wolfie at the school and they were not interested because it's adjacent to school property. At the top, trails are there as well. It's twenty-two acres, but it's fairly narrow and it's long, it's a it's not a rectangle, it's not quite spaghetti shaped, but it's a little wider than that, but it's a total of twenty-two acres. Um, he's asking seventy thousand dollars and I told him I had approached the school and he asked that I approached the council about whether there was any interest in acquiring that land, there was some question about whether maybe one of the trails was slightly on his property, but he wasn't sure about that, but, um, so this went to infrastructure as well and infrastructure, um, said this needs to go to the whole council to see if there's any we own quite a bit of store.
I guess that's the question, is it, to what end are we, we use it for right now, uh, or if we, we have the need, desire or want to add more acreage to what we already have, that's kind of where I'm looking at, you've got a pretty good trail system, this, this wouldn't connect.
You, you could, the only thing I can see it being used for at this point due to road access is additional trails for some other type of recreational activity.
Short of the hundred and fifty acres we already own up there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was the, the, basically the committee felt the same way, that we could not come up with any pressing need to acquire this property, they wanted to make sure that the entire council. So.
Okay, so that was sort of the committee's thought too, okay. Anybody have any deep burning desire to want to pursue this anymore or?
Okay. Just, just a question, given its location and its place on the map and zoning for the area and the team, are there any other possible uses for this piece of land shaped like that?
Well, I do know, Jim, the two pieces that are similar size, no, they're household. Okay. Um, you know, I'm not sure what that person's going to do with them, but they, they have some. This one's actually the closest to Race Course, which we have.
This one is off Donovan Road, isn't it?
Yeah, but it would be Bayview coming up through the top end.
So that would be your two access points.
Well, there are a lot of desire to go continue this, so, there you go.
Okay.
Um, Gully Road Public Easement Process.
As you note, there's a resolve under the agenda items to rescind the decision to remove the public easement from the section of Gully Road that we did on September eighth. Um, that was, resolve is, is there in place the way it is because I failed to properly notify, um, people of that this, posting the public hearing notice and putting on our website and doing all that was not sufficient, everyone with ownership on the road or a deed to write a way access to it requires an individual letter notification. And I failed to do that, but I failed to do that. And so that decision, um, to rescind, um, needs to happen because we did not follow a appropriate process in this. The, the one that is the next on the agenda, which is kind of out of orders, if you vote to rescind that, this Gully Road Public Easement Process is an opportunity for the council and members of the public to discuss whether the council should start this process over or whether it should not. That's, that's the purpose of the public easement process discussion. And that, that's what both have been on.
So, the resolve is based on not following the process, um, that we had in place for public hearing notification, correct?
I followed the public hearing process that we generally follow, there's a separate public hearing process for the, concerning abandonment, obsements and role related things that require more notification than was provided to anyone.
Okay.
So, uh, in order, if you get rid of, if you do twenty-eight and that passes, then you could do seven C to decide for the council and the public to talk about whether you want to start this over again and do it correctly.
Okay, when we get to the agenda items, we'll have the opportunity to have a conversation, um, if there's a motion on that. Unless everybody has a conversation that they've been having right now.
I, I have a question, no, there's a number of council, it's, uh, conflict eventers. Jim Morrison, he's first of all. If you decide to not do this vote when it comes up, what will that do to this whole process?
Well, I understand that then we'll end up in the court system as, as the, because there's an appeal that's already.
The way you understand it, now is that written in stone somewhere or?
Yeah, because there's been an appeal that's been filed, so that appeal would then have to be heard and everything would hold or act, correct?
We'd lose because our process was flawed because of the notification and anything that we did after not properly notifying people is null and void.
Now, is that to say that the, the closing of the road is null and void or the process we used is null and void?
The process that we use to notify people of the public hearing is not sufficient under the law to allow everybody that the law says should have an individual notification to be present. And so if, if the council voted not to rescind that and said that this public easement, we were still going to take away the public easement in that section of the road, the appeal would continue and eventually get to court and I, we've been advised that we would be unlikely to prevail because we failed to do the notifications and I, I, that's my response, I, I did that or didn't do that, but that's where we end up.
But it would be the town that would be in court.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, um, next one of the agenda items, the first is resolve twenty twenty-three twenty-six to approve the sale of Zero Crossroad to the highest bidder. Council like to proceed. Second. Have motion something, comments?
Uh, David Gray, um, Bucksport. Um, yeah, I was, uh, two days late from making it in on Monday and it was a lot going on there, uh, looking at the work part of, a lot of, uh, a lot of junk vehicles and garbage taken out of that property. Um, I burned numerous brush piles. And, um, I didn't have the money, it was, uh, pouring rain Monday and I didn't make it in Tuesday, um, the phones were, I didn't make, make it in, it was still wet. Um, but Wednesday, I, I had, um, called and she said that it's off the table, you know, um, and I just want to let you guys know, I still have that money and it's more than I had last time and I you know, I just would really appreciate you guys let me make this thing and, 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 you know, um, continue having, own the property, you know, potentially gain it down to my son someday. Um, we, me and my sister did come together and, uh, we started probate, uh, the, the process, um. So now we, we're going to have to hash that out between us and the court and, uh, you know, I just would, uh, just very much appreciate um, you know, an opportunity, you know, to do this and, uh, yeah, I do apologize for what makes you do, but life happens and, uh, I don't have a vehicle, I don't have license, I'm living a half an hour and a half walking distance away, so. It's been tough out there, so.
Thank you. Comments, questions?
We've gone through this several times, um, since I've been on the council, where we've given folks a chance and we've been burnt.
Yeah.
And, and, and we're in the court system now because of what we've done, giving folks chances and not, and not have folks follow through.
Yeah.
We were pretty explicit.
Yeah.
The last meeting we had on what the, what the instructions were.
Yeah.
Um, and, and the excuses shouldn't even come close to, to, to being what they are.
Right.
Um, there's, there's no reason that you, it was explicit, you had the money that night that you were willing to give us. You knew it, you knew when you had to be in here. And, and, and we, I think, went beyond where we normally do to make sure that you can try to keep this. Like I said, we've done this in the past and we've been burnt in the past. And I'm tired, I'm tired of being burnt.
Yeah.
And I, and, and I, and that's, that's where I'm at.
I do understand it, but I personally have never burnt you guys.
You did, you did, you did show up on Monday. So that, that, that doesn't hold away, David.
Yeah.
Doesn't hold away with me anyway. Bottom line here is, quite frankly, you should have been here, you should have beaten the town manager here on your way. You should have been at the front door Monday morning, money in hand, waiting for her to open the doors, that didn't happen.
Anybody else? Have a motion second, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Next is resolve twenty twenty-three twenty-seven to approve the sale of one sixty crossroad to the winning bidder of zero crossroad, how the council like to? Motion. Second, have a motion second? Anything on this one?
Yeah, same, I just would love to have the opportunity to tell you guys you've been learning.
Yep. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Next is resolve twenty twenty-three twenty-eight to rescind the decision to remove the public easement from a section of Gully Road, how the council like to proceed? Motion through, second. Questions, comments? Everybody understands what this, what this is? What, what town manager, how it's going to operate? All those in favor? Opposed? Next one?
Excuse me, will I have any, uh, time from now to get my stuff off the property?
Pardon?
Can I get my stuff off the property? Is that, if it's legal? Legal.
The, the, um.
There's family owns over there.
The winning bidder has a certain amount of time to come in and pay, uh, which is, I believe, ten days. And then, uh, I, I'm sure that, that they would allow you to get your cop, your property, um, off.
I could speak to the, the bidder, um, what it's.
It's, it's public, David.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I will.
I guess that was the last time, can you go and repeat that please?
They're not going to get notified until Monday, it's Thursday, but I will, if you want to call on Monday, I will give you the information for who the winning bidder was and what their contact information is, so you can arrange to do that.
Next is resolve twenty twenty-three twenty-nine to approve the sale of five Mount Olive Heights, map zero thirty lot zero nineteen.
We have no bids. Um, we have no bids on this one and, uh, whatever, we haven't yet had the building taken down, Wardwell hasn't gotten there yet. I would like to proceed with doing that and then get the lot cleaned up and re-advertise. I, I advertise that locally only to give people in Bucksport in this area um, an opportunity for that lot ahead of putting it out into a wider audience, but I would, um, advertise it. But I would advertise it in, in a broader region. It's a very nice lot and in town, certified water, sewer, and natural gas. And I think that once it's cleaned up, it may be more attractive to the buyer than it is.
If they're okay with that, I mean, we own the property, so, and the whole intent of this was to try to clean that up to begin with, so. If there's okay with that, around town, they're just still have to take it down and clean it up and have another piece of property for sale so we can move it. If you're okay? If you guys, you okay with that, Ed?
Yep.
All right. Next is resolve twenty twenty-three thirty to approve the bid, the loan for the second and third years of the road improvement project. How would the council like to proceed? Motion through. Have motion second, any comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Is this just me deciding this?
Yeah.
I'll be sorry. Next, we have resignations. Adrian Stone, firefighter, paramedic resignation. How the council like to proceed? Motion through. Have motion to accept, the second. All those in favor? Opposed. Thank you, Adrian. Next is quick claim deeds, we have the quick claim deed for Dream Realty LLC, map zero forty-one, lot zero twenty-four, tax liens dated six twenty twenty eighteen, six nineteen twenty nineteen, six thirty twenty twenty, six fifteen twenty twenty-one, six sixteen twenty twenty-two. How the council like to proceed?
Second.
Motion second, we were putting those sales from the last meeting. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next is a quick claim deed, Nathaniel and Jessica Gray, map zero zero nine, lot zero thirty-three, tax liens dated six nineteen twenty nineteen, six thirty twenty twenty, six fifteen twenty twenty-one, six fifteen twenty twenty-two. How the council like to proceed?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed. I think that was everybody. Did you give anybody's hand on that? Next is a quick claim deed for Jason Chappie and Justin Clapper, map zero thirty-nine, lot zero zero one, tax liens dated six twenty twenty eighteen, six nineteen twenty nineteen, six thirty twenty twenty, six fifteen twenty twenty-one, six sixteen twenty twenty-two. How the council like to proceed?
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Next is the town manager report. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, so, since we rescinded the decision to remove the public easement from a section of the Gully Road, the next question to the council is, when are we going to do it? We want to restart the process? And if so, the town manager will have a resolve to have a public hearing on that at our next meeting?
If the council decides it wants to restart the process, you would tell me to put on the next agenda a vote to stop the process, which would then trigger the public hearing and the individual notification, all that, and that would be, the public hearing would be at a future meeting after, or if.
Everybody okay with that, or?
I think there are people here that also wanted to address that.
Was that, anybody have any comments on that? Just state your little pieces.
My name's Donald Jewett. I know people have an account here in Spotty sometimes, so I'd like to screw it up. I need to tell you, I've been a buck four resident for over forty-five years. Counselors, Mr. Side, and the members. I guess there are a couple of things I'd like to go over, the wind kind of came out my sails a bit, but it's changed and everything, but I would like to go over a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to explain to everyone, or it seems to be some kind of a misunderstanding, about public easements and rightaways. So a rightaway gives a person or persons a right to go across private property. A public easement gives the right of all the property to go across that property. That's just the difference. Public you know, or versus a group or a few individuals. So I just want people using that rightaway and public easement back and forth, but there's really, there's quite a difference in it, really. So anyway, this is a public easement we're trying to extinguish. And so people say they're trying to close it now, they're going to be extinguishing this rightaway. So if these rightways extinguished, it's my understanding that, that we know passage across this private property without specific permission of the landowners, which will be whoever owns the property surrounding this Gully Road, will no longer be a Gully Road. So if Mr. Morrison, or the Morrison brothers, back, decided they were going to sell the property next week, the new landowner, if this passes, could say, no one going through our property, you're done. Or Mr. Morrison, or the Morrison brothers could do the same. Once this is passed and the rightaway is extinguished, that's it, there's no more public going across there. That's the end of it. So I wanted to make sure people are aware that when we, if we go forward with this, if we close this down, would be no more, no more Gully Road, and if we decide in the future as a town and we think that there should be something going on up through there, we're going to have to buy this all back again. So I think, I'm really not sure why we're doing this, but I would like to say also that by keeping this Gully Road open, we have a lot of safety issues involved here. In, in two thousand fifteen, the culvert washed out at the beginning of the Gully Road on the south end. And there was a gentleman, a gentleman that moved the cave down there, Frank Patridge, calling me in a panic, the culvert's up, we can't get out of here. He said, well, you can go through the Morrison's end, up through the Morrison side of the property, up through the, and the Gully Road on the, on the north side, and I'll get the best I can. And so I got my gravel guy, Bill, he came in, we bought a bigger culvert and we replaced it. But that's just the issue is, if you're in there and something happens and the other end is blocked off or, or the rightway is extinguished, where's that, where's that? Everyone from the Turkey Pass all the way through the Gully Road to Central Street has a safety net. If there's a forest fire, if there's a natural disaster, all those folks can get out through this Gully Road. So there's another thing going around that I'd like to clarify, is there's supposed to be some landlocked property somewhere down this Gully Road. So there's like twenty-five of us, I guess my wife tells, I said nineteen, and I think it's twenty-five of us down in there. So we share these rightways. This, this, the Grist Mill Road is a public, is a private rightaway, like we've already, like I've already, like here's private right. So the Gully Road starts about a third of the way through, the Grist Mill Road starts about a third of the way through, circled around the services, all the properties that are filed with the Smash Dream Realty Trust. That's not all twenty-five people, but there are, there are several landlords in here, few here tonight. With that deed, we get a rightaway that spills onto the, the Gully Road, on the north end as well as on the south end. If you, if your folks had closed it down as you was planning, I rightaway, I wouldn't have, I'd have had to turn around and leave and go all the way back around to get out of there. As the way it was going to be written, if you closed only half there, that's what would happen. So my contention is, is we couldn't get a rightaway because the people that sold us the land didn't have one. It's a public easement, you can't give anyone a rightaway. It's a public easement, there's no one signing the deed. So I just wanted to clarify that. There's a safety issue here, there's fire, natural disasters, police can use it. If my wife or my animals are injured and they, and I have to take them to the hospital or to the, that, I don't have to drive all the way back around Turkey Path and go all the way back around up by Bucks Mills. I could go, just take the last, at the end of the second rightaway, and I'm on Bucks Mills Road within two, three, or four minutes. It doesn't make any sense to close this road. This is a historic monument. I think, you know, one other thing I want to go over, as I've been going through this, I noticed that the town Bucksport evidently has some problems with graveyard. And I think you'll follow the committee, correct?
What, what, what are we talking about graveyard? We're talking.
Because of the graveyard in the Gully Road.
Talking about the eas, the easement and that, so.
Yeah, so, so with my understanding and reading here, I've discovered that, uh, Demian Harold's mother wanted to have the town get an easement across their property. Now, last, when I watched the video, Mr. Morrison, Harold Morrison, said there was people wandering around down there. Now, I personally have had people ask me, where is the cemetery? I think it's time to get an easement, I think it's time to get some signage in there, and so the people stop wandering around, people only wander around when they're lost. They can't find the cemetery, it's not right for the Morrison's. I think the Morrison's should be paid for their land, they've been far too long, and people just wander through and, and they really have no way to stop them. I think it's time to pay the Morrison's for what they, and get that legacy going for, for their mom. She wanted it, and I want it. So I think we can maybe get together a little bit on it for a while. You're the cemetery guy.
Yeah, cemetery, okay.
Yeah, we're talking about it anyway, see, I think there's some other cemeteries around in the town that really normally have needed access or rightaway, it's a public easement. And so I think that's something we should, is the town look at, you know, and try to respect. See what's going on. Okay, so, oh, and there's also, I guess it's going around that it's, uh, people are going through very rapidly through the driveway and spinning and tearing up and so forth. All the laws apply to this, uh, public access that they do on the road. So I would recommend to get some videos, some films, some evidence presented to the police department. They'll take care of this, they, there's no one that has a right to drive recklessly by your home. That's incorrect. If you wanted to, well, perhaps, if you speed bumps in, you can slow me down, I don't go very fast. I'm an old guy and you know me, I don't drive very fast. So anyways, I think, you know, there's a few things you can do to mitigate your problem with the speed, and I'd say get some evidence and, and start raising some devil around, people that's disrespecting your, your home. So that's, that's one thing I would like to do, is, is see if we can maybe do something to slow people down by the Morrison's home. Uh, let's see, do I have anything else here I'd like to go over? Yeah, just that, you know, there's twenty-five of us in there, you know, not all of us use this, um, actually, you know, the, the north entrance of the Gully Road, but some of us do. You know, Mr. Matthews is in the room tonight, I believe he's wearing a sarm. He lives right in Norington, he uses the north end, we live right up there beside the end, we use that end, there's a few people use that end. Some folks go through there, you know, they walk, they take their bikes, they take their horses. We have four-wheeled ATVs, motorbikes, you know, people use this, it's, there's too many places that's being closed down, blocked up, this is a public place that public can use. And I think it's, keep it open, keep it open for the public, and I really don't believe that that big a problem with, with, with traffic, but if there is, I guess that's what happens to easements, people use them. So anyway, I'd like to thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Everybody else?
Harold Morrison, I would vote East Buck sport. I think before this gets resolved, there's got to be a committee put together, and they're going to have to come out and will point out where the Gully Road is. It's not where they're driving, that's part of our fear. Years ago, grandfather allowed people to go through because if the road gets muddy, messed up, so he set his road over, that's what's being used. We just got nine inches of rain, it's already muddy enough. Nothing we can do about it, we're not controlling nature. But I think a committee needs to be formed, to come out, bring your pencils, your papers, your measurements, anything you can bring, cameras, probably some tape repellent and a good pair of jeans, because there's a lot of brush and rye as you're going to be crawling through looking at where the road is supposed to be. If somebody brings a chainsaw, we'd be willing to cut a tree down, see just how long it's been growing in that road. It was abandoned in eighty-three, and I think that means it goes back to the landowner. I'm not sure, I'm not part of it on that. So we have no problem with people using that graveyard, it's closed, but we know more people in it. The people that are beyond it, that have the right to use it, we have no problem letting them go through. Mr. Matthews could, could tell you that. But if it comes down to push the shove, I think I'm going to put my property back where it belongs, and something will have to be done to put the Gully Road back where it belongs. If it was abandoned in eighty-three and it didn't turn back to us, it's no longer the Gully Road. The Gully Road starts at Grist Mill Road, goes to Jacobus. Like I said, I'm not sharp on that stuff, but I've lived there my entire life and I've pretty much seen what goes on there and how it went on. And I'm just trying to protect myself and my property.
Thank you.
Is all I'm up to. Thank you very much, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Kirk Matthew, I own some property that I purchased in on Thurston Home in this area. I do want to grab the quick definition here. I don't want to talk down anybody, I don't want to come across that way, but the definition of a road is a wide, leading one place to another, especially one with specifically prepared surface which vehicles can use. I don't think we're talking a road here, we're talking a goat path. When I bought a piece of property, my rightaway is the only rightaway that I know of going through the north end. Everybody else that has property down in there has to go through the Jacobus Pond End. I wish I had their entrance, there probably wouldn't be a discussion about this tonight if that was the case, but it's not the case. If I'm expected to go and use my deeded access, I think everybody should be expected to use their deeded access. And I've put a lot of time and money and effort, for thirty years, the town has discontinued. Discontinued means no longer available. Therefore, for thirty years, nobody's used this road as an emergency exit that I know, until I've improved it. And other people have started improving and connecting the good part of the Jacobus Pond End to the north end. And now there's been more traffic in the last two weeks than there has since I've owned the property since two thousand seventeen. And the road cannot hold up to that kind of traffic. The current condition is somewhat passable. I found pieces of people's vehicles have recently gone through. It, it's, it's a one-lane goat path right now, and it's not safe. If you meet somebody on, coming the other way, someone has to move over, there's no room to move over right now. To be a town road, it requires to be wide, it requires money to be involved, ditching, drainage, all kinds of stuff that if the town's not willing to do, then I think they need to consider doing it properly, having a vote, giving everybody that is an immediate landowner of butting the road to vote on this. And I would appreciate your consideration on that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have something else, please. This is Donald Jewett again, I'd like to clarify that this is not considered a road, it's a public easement. Let's get back to that again, it's a public easement. The road is safe to pass, uh, people have been passing, people have been passing there for forty years, I've been passing there. We spend literally thousands of dollars a year, thousands of dollars a year on this road on the north end, and we're continuing through to the south end. We believe this road is important, we don't mind, it's our public, it's our money we're spending, we're not asking for the town to help. If, if in fact, Mr. Morrison is saying this, and if he has evidence to prove that the road is in the wrong location, then guess who will step up for the plate? The person that always prepares of the road, are the people, my wife and I. We're going to make sure that the road is passable up to where the, where the road is supposed to be. If we can have some evidence and some proof, but I don't think we just need people out there with their tape measures and their pencils, I think we need a surveyor. I think this has to be surveyed and know where the road actually is located. I'm sure this could be determined by a survey, and at the same time, the surveyor can put the easement in through to Mr., the Morrison brothers of the cemetery that's located beside their property. That's all I have, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Christina Reiber, resident of Bucksport, East Bucksport, twenty-seven years. My main residence is about fifteen hundred from the north end of the Gullies Road. I purchased two properties, Mark Eastman. I purchased two properties, Mark Eastman, and another one, which we built a cabin on that we have deep in the gullies, and we use both entrances for our access. There is nothing in our deed that says we have to use one or the other, we use both. And, what I want to ask is, um, why are we discontinuing? Why are we discontinuing a public easement? It's money, it's time, energy, all spent on this one-point-five mile road that goes from Jacobus Pond Road to Bucks Mills Road. We are community, we show appropriate community behavior, we respect each other, we show concern, we show kindness to each other, we help people out for the good of the community and ourselves. We also want to be there, we do no harm, we injure nobody, and we do not oppress. We, my husband and I, um, are the pioneers who first struck ground down there in two thousand eight on our honeymoon. We, um, built a cabin, and that we use frequently. If a new neighbor needs gravel for their driveway, we let them use our gravel pit. If a culvert washes out, we replace the culvert and we put the call, Billy, and he brings the gravel. If we see a new person in the gullies, we stop and ask and say hello, this is who we are, this is community. We fix the gullies road for us and for everyone to pass. We do not ask for compensation, we do it for the community. We walk and drive on the gullies and meet the public using the gullies, we make community that way. Some people move in, are born here, and they don't have this spirit. This mind, stay off, pay me the pass on, on that deeded access, gossiping and belating to support their smear campaigns with no evidence, that breaks down the community. Okay, that's a prerogative, that's their spirit. But when they say, is mine, stay off, that's when we have to sit back and weigh the consequences. Weigh the consequences of safety, of future recreation, many people, horseback riding, ATV. The pathway that the ancestors laid before us built the foundation of our community out there. Others, others wanna move in and be part of it. The ease of getting around to the community, the ease of getting, that's what builds community, that's what has brought us here tonight. To support that connection, the Buck Pond Road and Bucks Mills Road, the connector of our community. We are pleased in the name of the community, the Positive Community Member Act, do not privatize this public easement. Leave the gullies open to honor the past, the present, and the future.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I go first, if I have the door? I did, I wasn't going to do this because Susan took, uh, care of it. And I will say, I'm very nervous because Jim Morrison was very rude to me.
We're not here to talk about that, though.
No, I'm not, I'm... I live on Gully Road on the other end, and, um, Susan knows. This whole thing has been very upsetting, and, um, it started with, no, no, it was, I, I go to my four-wheeler all the time, I live on Gully, I take it off, and, um, I was told, I've lived there fifteen years, and, um, I couldn't go through, okay, it, it wasn't, no one had fixed it where I could go through it, I was told that I could go through. And, um, I was very happy, Susan's been to my place, it's very beautiful in there, and, um, so I, I went through there and I got to the very end, and, um, Jim came out and, uh, it, it wasn't a nice conversation, but, and as you can see, there's a lot of emotion, but, um, I wasn't told about this, and I was informed in a very nasty way. But the great thing about Jim is that Jim said to me, um, if you'd gone to the town council meeting, you would know about it. And he was right, and he told me to go home and to watch the, the stream, okay, of what happened the night before. I, it was the very next day that I showed up on, on his property. And, um, I went home and, uh, so, one thing that, um, really bothered me, I, I, I had notes, but like I said, I really didn't plan on coming up here. Um, the notification part, but the people who are, alright, so before the vote, okay, and I'll, I'll try not to take a fire touch.
Well, and, and just so you know, we're, we're not taking any action tonight, and we're gonna have a public hearing.
I know, but I might not have the nerve again, just hearing everybody, I just, I'm, and I promise I'll be quick, and the people have told me you don't want me to talk long, and I, I'm just, let me get a couple.
That's not it at all, I just, I want folks to understand that.
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna say a couple of things, you gave everybody else.
And I am, and you were the one that said you weren't gonna take long, you can take as long as you want.
Okay, oh, I won't, I won't, but, um, before you guys voted, that was a whole road, it was a road from my end at Jacobus Pond Road to the Morrison's, okay? It was never split, um, never split, and I was told that the people that were going to be affected were notified. Well, before you voted, this was one road, okay, it affects everybody. So why were certain people chosen to be here that night of the vote, okay, and I'm not asking you guys to answer.
I, I answered, the, the town manager said that she made a mistake, and that's why we have to be sitting there.
Right, okay, and that's fine, and, and the reasons, I have a real problem with the reasons, okay, of why they're closing it down, and you're right, I'm not going to go into this, um, if it comes up again, then I'll go into it. But, I lived there for fifteen years, and just like that, the other end gets closed. But on the notes that I see, you guys wanna keep my end open, so, and I think it was the New Hampshire guy that, that stated this, they wanna keep my end open in case there's a fire, they can get out. But what about me? I live there permanently, I have a house there, I am there all year round, okay? If you are going to grant them that option of having a way to get out, can I have the option too? I live there just like Jim lives there, and Jim, I get it that you're emotional about this, just like I am, I, I get that. But, I have to say, I agree a lot with what Don said when he was up here, okay? Um, I just don't see the reason of having the public easement removed. That's, um, and I just wanna say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Harold Morrison again, we have no problem with the public easement. I'm gonna repeat, put the Gully Road back where it belongs, and anybody that wants to use it can use it. I'm tired of my field getting torn up. We're allowing people to get through that field, and it's not the Gully Road.
Okay, thank you. Goodbye, some please. Pardon? Excuse me, one moment, may I say something else? Don Jewett, once again, what I wanna say is that we need evidence to prove where this road is located. We have hearsay, that the road is not where it's supposed to be. I, I'd like to see some evidence, if we can bring some evidence in there, and then, and we'll work on the road, get it where it's supposed to be, thank you.
Anybody else have a, what the plan is going forward?
I, no, I got something else. There's been some conflicting, uh, information, I guess, if you will, when you look at maps, of the area. Can someone tell me exactly where the Jacobus Pond Road ends, where the Gully Road starts? Because...
Right, right now, we, we are back at ground zero with this, so I, I have zero answers for you. We rescinded, we rescinded what we did.
Right.
And we're starting back at ground zero, so I, 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 my best answer, I have no answer for you.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna start this whole process again and look at it.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
As I said, I can make a suggestion that we, uh, look at the historical records of this, there are conflicting names on where the Gully Road starts, depending on what year of map that you look at. But we need to go back to where, when the Gully Road was established and was an actual road in Bucksport before, it wasn't discontinued, it was abandoned. In nineteen eighty-one, when the town abandoned, and abandoned for the purposes of municipal, meant that the town would have no further legal responsibility for maintenance. Um, that, that's abandoned, you were not gonna spend another dime fixing the road. Or even, and, we have a number of these that we did that with, which are, have you couldn't find where that former road went, because it's all trees. It's never been act, you know, once it was abandoned, it was abandoned because it was of total use that there was no compelling reason to continue maintenance. I, I would like to be able to look back to when the road was established and then have that, that should define some meets and bounds and locations, and give us a better idea where the road is, if it's not where it's supposed to be, and, um, you know, if, if this is gonna be an issue, maybe there's some alternate way other than through the driveway and for access that gets people in one end and out the other, but doesn't have to go end up exactly where it is, and, and I mean, there, there may be a compromise that might work better for people, but first, I think that, since a question has been raised about the location of the road, that we need to find your, I know we can find them, take a look at, have a surveyor take a look at the documents that created the road, it's where it's supposed to be, and when it was established, what it's, where it went, you know, it, is Jacobus Pond end at where there's no more pavement on Jacobus, or does it go further up and, or further? But, the establishment of the road should show that information, and so if that you get that information for you, we could, then you could at least have a, a basis to be deciding what you're talking about.
Yep.
Just a, just a quick thing, it is a range line, if that will help anybody.
Excuse me? I'm sorry, I didn't...
That Gully Road is a range line, if it will help anybody in their quest to discover where or what it is.
Something like the old days of R three, R, T nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
All set? Thank you. Public hearings and approval of licenses or permits, I don't believe we have any of your Jacob.
Nope, I think we're up in town and in the country.
Oh yeah, we never got kicked in with.
Thanks. We have lots of events going on this weekend, um, this Saturday there, um, we have Ghostport is returning to Bucksport, and events will be happening on October twenty-ninth, the tenth, from ten AM to fourteen PM in the downtown. Excuse me, the Bucks Mills Riding Dunk Club will be having a hunter's breakfast from four AM to nine AM on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, at their location at three seventy Bucks Mills Road. I would suggest that people come and enjoy some good food and company, and you're welcome whether you're a hunter or not. Bookstax is having its twenty-sixth annual first day of deer hunting extravaganza with discount, starting at six AM on October twenty-ninth as well, and Friday at the Ford is back at Fort Knox on both Friday and Saturday nights. I would remind you that you have to buy your tickets online, and they have to be purchased prior to four thirty PM on the day that you want to go. Um, Monday, there's a block Halloween party on Bridge Street with a haunted house, candy games, and a food truck. And, on Sunday at one o'clock at the high school is trunk or treat in the Bucksport High School parking lot. If you've not had a chance to see it, Main Street Bucksport is now posting a monthly calendar of events on its Facebook page, and local organizations and businesses are welcome to get their events posted on it. For information, I would contact Barrett Cole, the interim executive director of Main Street Bucksport. A successful skate Bucksport fundraiser was held on October twenty-first at the proposed site of the skate park in town. There was good food and good company, skate demos, and money raised for the future park. I would thank the organizers, organizers for that event, for all their hard work. The town council has talked about it on a number of occasions about how to help foster a minor home improvement program for older adults that helps to address safety and accessibility issues. I met with Sherry Billings of Habitat for Humanity in Hancock County, and she talked with her board about it, and they are willing to look at doing a pilot project in Bucksport for such a program. They are willing to provide the construction manager, volunteer training, tools, insurance, and program oversight, if the town helped to recruit some volunteers, and funding at a predetermined amount for materials that are not donated. I would like to schedule this topic for a services committee meeting to see if there's interest in moving this forward. This is something we've tried to find a home for for a long time. Habitat for Humanity has the elements that we were missing, which were organizational depth, insurance, and the ability to train volunteers, so this may be a good solution for the accessibility and safety improvements we talked about. Our K nine officer Axel and handler Matt Schmidt are doing really well in the drug detection training course at the Maine Criminal Justice Academy. They will be graduating from the program on November twelfth, and we look forward to having these important public safety team members back in Bucksport. And finally, I am so pleased to announce that Mary Jane Bush received the Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition Lifetime Achievement Award at their annual meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-fifth. Mary Jane has spent decades in Bucksport, not just working on programs and projects to benefit quality of life for people in Bucksport, that she has been the driving force behind many of them. We truly appreciate, appreciate Mary Jane and all of her efforts on behalf of this community.
Any questions? How much, how much did the skate park raise?
I don't have the full, oh, but I, I, I know they did pretty well, they probably about a check made at the skate park Bucksport, whether we could cash it, I'm not...
Alright, um, we have no public hearings, the licenses, permits, items not on the agenda for the council, the public, anybody from the public have anything? Richard, oh, John Paul. Yeah, Richard, Richard's last, okay.
Hey you, John Paul Valan, Main Street Bucksport. I was gonna come tonight to talk about, about coming to that with, uh, Main Street Bucksport, but, um, I was working today, I realized that we haven't given you an update quite well, so I'll give just a brief update and then talk about that, so, um, September first, um, we regretfully accepted uh, Mary Powell's resignation, and, uh, hired, as, as, uh, Susan said, you know, Barrett Cole as the interim director, director. You know, just highlight three things that we've been working on pretty hard since then. Uh, one is trying to get the museum in the streets completed, um, David Doane, he's been kinda spearheading that effort, and, uh, he reported me today that he's looking for December first, um, completion of that, so hopefully we, it, it, that's moved along real well. Uh, the other thing is, you know, passing it around, we, uh, put together a community book book, and, uh, you can pick these up at... you can pick these up at most, uh, businesses in town. You know, there's real community effort, uh, a collection of, of, um, recipes from various people throughout the community, and when you're thinking about, uh, Christmas gifts, might be, uh, something that you can think about. And then the, uh, the other thing I wanted to, um, initially come forward was the, uh, upcoming International Maritime Film Festival, which is, uh, next week. So we have, it's kind of a three-day event, Thursday night at the Alamo. It'd be just one showing that really is not, it's more of a kickoff for the festival, it's not part of the films that were submitted for the festival, but we're gonna have a showing of, of the Perfect Storm. So, five dollars, so can't get a better deal. And, uh, want to see that movie on the big screen, Thursday night, the third, uh, Friday. Oyster Men concert will take place at the Buck Memorial Library. So that's, uh, Carter Newell, who is part of the, uh, National Park, as a, uh, as a band that's gonna be performing there. Limited seating, so, uh, I think it's like thirty-five, forty people that would be able to come in, but, uh, that's kind of a joint effort, effort between Main Street Bucksport and, uh, W E R U. And then, um, Saturday, all day long at the Alamo is the, is the film festival. Movies in the morning, afternoon, and evening. You can go to the International Film Festival website and buy tickets. Uh, they're also on sale at, uh, at Andy's or at, um, Portico. And, uh, we, uh, a couple of things I wanted to highlight around that. Derek did a great job of getting sponsors, the Bucksport Marines sponsoring, uh, Maine Maritime Academy with their, uh, private chair at Bucksport, uh, which I think is a great thing to have them be, uh, kind of our key sponsor for the event. Hamilton Marine is sponsoring, and, uh, kind of a neat thing is, uh, Gagans Brewery is, uh, donating a beer that will be sold at the Alamo Thursday night and Saturday. It's called, uh, Captain's Cool, and it's, uh, I believe, you might know about this, being a mariner yourself, but, uh, she was the first female, um, captain, sea captain on the, uh, east coast, and she from Bucksport. Gagans has, has made this beer after her, and so it kind of goes along.
I thought you were talking about, I knew about the beer.
But, uh, that's kind of a cool thing that, uh, Gagans is one of the event, so. Thank you, and, uh, you know, we, we got the sponsors now, and we just need people to show up and, uh, enjoy the festival.
Just real quick, Paul, any idea on, um, how many books you need to sell to turn profit?
Uh, yeah, um, fifteen dollars a piece, uh, we, we printed four hundred books, and I think about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five books, so. And we're already there.
Nice.
So, yeah.
Anybody else? One else, one once, twice, two, you go first.
There's something that isn't on the agenda, but it's something that we can talk about, I think, under this. Because I see Chris Rindel sitting in the back row, and I don't have an application in front of me, but in front of the council, so.
Yes, sorry, it was a little busy today. So, we're trying to improve the Holiday Lights Parade. It's great, it's been great every year, it's grown every year. COVID, we had it stationary. Last year, we brought it back, and Chris made it the route that the former Bay Festival parade route was. Uh, I have an intern this year from Bucksport High School, Brandon Eldon. He's a senior. He designed these T-shirts, which will be for sale for the Festival of Lights Parade. Two-sided, and the sleeves, it's long sleeve. They're gonna go for thirty dollars, which is the price that it costs the town to purchase them. As they're sold and we get the money back, we're gonna turn around and buy more so that they're more available today of the event as well. And you may remember that, uh, the Friends of Fort Knox, when they applied for their application, uh, requested five thousand dollars for fireworks. It was approved, it didn't happen at Bay Festival because Bucksport Bay Business Coalition used their own money to have fireworks. I spoke, Chris and I spoke with Dean, and we asked if he would be amicable to allowing the fireworks to happen at the end of the Holiday Lights Parade to add another special layer to the event. The state has approved it. We talked to Sue about it. Um, we are not going to promote using the walkway to watch the fireworks. Typically, people may drive down there, but as we all know, we do not maintain the walkway in the wintertime, so there is whether we will ask people not to walk the walkway, or they will need to proceed at their own caution. We spoke with Public Safety Director, Gagans moves on board as well. And I'm asking if you would kindly take up an item that is not on the agenda to allow fireworks to take place after the Holiday Lights Festival this year.
Motion? Make a motion to take an item that's not on the agenda. All those in favor? Close, that passes? I'll take a motion to...
He had his hand up.
He did.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just open us, right? So, a motion to accept, to have fireworks?
Please.
Motion to have fireworks at the end of the Holiday Lights Parade.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Close? Motion passes? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I have my phone up here. I'm not texting or doing it. We have a lot of people to email in during meetings, and it's to my email address. So all I, what I'm doing is refreshing my phone so that I can see if we've received any emails from people who want input into, we haven't yet, but my phone goes to sleep, and now I have to wake it up. But I'm, I'm not being rude, I'm not taking attention to the meeting, but I'm the contact for the email address, that's why.
Anybody from the council having another on the agenda?
Yes, sir, it's fair, but very briefly, I, if you know, I serve on the Hakkah County Budget Advisory Committee. Just wanted to give the council an update on where that, you know, that process is. The commissioners sent a budget to the advisory committee, um, that basically was asking for fourteen and a half percent raise. To make a very long story short, nine, about approximately nine and a half percent of, of the raise is negotiated salaries. Union they've negotiated a seven percent increase, uh, with various unions, a seven percent increase. Um, and then, of course, you have your, as years of service, um, that there are raises associated with that. Along the other lines of things, uh, the budget advisory committee went through that. Um, it has knocked that down, um, to about eleven point nine percent. Um, and for those who aren't familiar with the process, how that works is the commissioners send, uh, the budget to the budget advisory committee. The budget advisory committee can then go, go to the line by line and decides where they stand on, on, on the budget, and sends it back, uh, for the commissioners. If, um, the, the committee votes unanimously, for all intents and purposes, on a particular line item, uh, the commissioners can only overturn it if they're unanimous. That happens occasionally. Um, the commissioners, I, I do trust this, the commissioners, um, have, are committed to bringing that, um, increase down even further. But I do want to send an expectation, just where things are with the county, where the raises that have been negotiated are, and aren't contractual, et cetera, are about nine and a half percent. Then we, I will think the commissioners will have done a pretty good job to get that budget down another two percent, to keep it under ten percent. If you're interested in this type of thing, uh, LD one, which is in order to exceed LD one, you have to have a majority vote of the budget advisory committee, and a, and a two-thirds vote of the commissioners, uh, called for an increase of, uh, five point two percent, or four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. What the budget advisory committee sent back to the commissioners exceeds LD one by over twice that. Um, they could not, um, stay under LD one and pay the people that negotiated raises that they have. So, um, not full of good news on that front, but I did just want to make sure that the council is aware that that's where things can run. There, there are, their audit is not complete, so in terms of what transfers in, um, still remains to be seen. And of course, there are pro funds that can use certain portions of it, but that's where the process is now.
Thank you.
To put that in perspective, and say what it means for Bucksport, our county tax is based on our proportional share of the value of the county. And our value as a community, according to the state of name this year, we're not more than fifty million dollars. I can tell you, we did not have fifty million dollars in investment in Bucksport this year. But the state's assessment of our value, based on sales of property, says that that's what Bucksport is valued at. And that, that fifty million will kick in this year to impact the county budget. The twenty-five million in addition that they added to us last year will. So our, our percentage of the county value is growing, and that pushes up our county tax, which is currently about two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. We're writing on the first of every year. And the bigger our percent of their value of the county, the bigger our share of that. So the ten percent increase in their budget could move our dime in combination with our increased value.
Thank you.
Mr. Cavelli?
Yes. Wouldn't all the other towns' values also have gone up because of the prices of that real estate?
I, I don't know how theirs have been impacted. I don't know if it's proportional across the, or some communities made factored increases in their own valuation to catch some of this, what I think is a bubble in the real estate value market. And we chose not to inflate everybody's value at the local level so that we didn't have to turn around and drop it when we get on the other side of everybody from nineteen other states thinking that we're a great place to be in the middle of winter. So, no offense to anybody, but I think that that, that we're gonna come down the other way, and that that valuation will, will shift locally. I don't know how fast the state's gonna catch up.
Yeah, you would expect it, and I don't have exact numbers, but there are communities in Hickok County that saw proportionals, saw an even bigger increase. And some that didn't seem that so much. You probably get the big ones, who just thought of the towns that saw a lot of that type of work in the last fifteen minutes or so.
John Paul?
I have the exact same question.
Anybody else from council? Alright, um, so, with the assignments, I know we have, is, is the standard guy only one meeting in November?
We, I'm supposed to have a meeting on November tenth. November eleventh is Veterans Day, so November tenth is the holiday branch.
Okay.
So, since we only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December, we're suggesting that we do that the third week in each month, with the seventh, I think it's the seventeenth of November, and then the third Thursday in December. And that splits it so that we're close, we're, we'll catch whatever is necessary for business needed on, over those things. I think it brought that to my attention today. Is that?
I guess, I'll go for everybody. Does anybody have any issues with, I won't be. I can't make confidence. Is that?
I can't make fifteen.
December fifteenth?
Seventeenth I'll be down. Eighteenth I'll be down in the conference.
Alright, well, if we had one missing from each, I guess we can still, four without, so it's through the seventeenth, and the, the, seventeen November and the fifteenth December.
Services?
Services, are we, we, we ready for that on, on the, on the, the November meeting? Um, I'm, I've been, and it sounds like there may be some load works, and like we, and that only December, where we're gonna have that, ready, empty up for that. We have seven thirty in the first. And then, what would be the?
Fourteen for economic development.
Fourteen for economic.
Thirteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Is there, is it? Were we supposed to do something with the landfill?
That, the landfill discussion on the council agenda will now be November seventeen.
Will that be part of an infrastructure committee, right? With the infrastructure or council?
Infrastructure.
Everyone? Everyone's economic development, it would go to infrastructure, and then it would come to the council.
So that's not the infrastructure that I, on the seventh, that night.
Sixty-four.
Yeah. And then we'll put it on the council agenda for the fifteenth in December. And if we get a bunch of stuff piled up, and I make contact, everybody, we may have to have a special meeting or something. We, we know still, um, that first week in December or something, we'll see what we stand with what we've been going on, so. What's up? Next time's adjournment, motion adjourned, second. All those in favor?
Sign these down, so Jacob, could you sign those before you leave?